I want to call this meeting to order at 6:34. And after our call to order, our first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens comments? Yes?
Hi, Melanie Yarston, just want to remind you, our blood drive is Monday, and if we have three women who want to stop in from Forte High and get blood, be wonderful, it's right here. Thank you.
Mel, do you know if they need any volunteers?
I have quite a few. Thank you for the offer, but I had some teachers, and we have high schools who are volunteering, so we're doing well. Thank you so much.
That's from noon to five, you said?
Noon to five, yes. It's a time I can't get to once.
Yes, Robert?
This Saturday morning, we are pleased to announce that Complete Streets will be doing a demonstration down at the farmer's market. We're going to be doing two bump outs into the road to show what traffic calming is, which is what I talked about a couple of years ago. And we could certainly use young, strong people who might want to get their credits for graduation to come help us lay out the sod and set up the whole thing, and then possibly break down at the end of the day, so if we could send anybody our way, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I attended the Complete Streets meeting, Complete Streets meeting last night at the Fleet State Gym. And I don't know everything about the entire plan, but there's been a lot of work, a lot of effort put together, and they'll have some examples of the studies that they have had here in town over the past couple of months. You may remember a couple of months ago, they were on school property, and they were observing kids walking to and from school, and how the sidewalks work in our area. And there are some serious issues that we should be concerned about as parents, as members of the community, as residents of Winchester. I've heard it mentioned before, you know, Complete Streets is all about safety, and we've talked about before how there's no crosswalk on Route 10. After you get to a certain point after your house, after you get to the old church, there's a lot of students who walk up towards, past the learning center, and they're right on the road. And these are students that walk to school every day. And Complete Streets is about suggesting different ways in which to make the streets safer, not just for pedestrians, but for drivers as well. So I would also encourage people to check out the display that they have. It's going to be right in front of the farmer's market on Main Street on Saturday. I think it's from nine till two?
Nine till three, I believe, unless they decide to close it earlier. Setup, if anybody wants to come help us, setup begins at 7:00 a.m. because we have to, I'm picking up the sod tomorrow. We have to lay out the sod, put the planters and the flowers and the benches and everything else to pretty it up with the pocket parks, basically. And you could certainly use any assistance.
And they had the same demonstration in Hinsdale last year?
Yes, they did.
They've done it for Hinsdale, and there are some students, there are some interns involved in this program that are doing a lot of work for Winchester. And they've put an entire packet together, and they're presenting this to the planning board and to the selectmen, so it's really positive for the town. And the school is definitely involved in this report.
Anything else for citizens' comments? This is our first meeting with our interim superintendent, Dr. Gennebeath. I know you have a couple of words that you wanted to say.
Yeah, thank you. I just want a couple of things to, to me having an opportunity to work for the board. I cannot tell you how excited I am about this opportunity to work with you. I believe very firmly in my heart that working together, we're going to make some amazing changes here in the district. I have to tell you that I was extremely impressed when the board went through the interviewing process, and the questions that you asked were very insightful and interesting enough. When you listen to questions, you also kind of hear, you know, what concerns are, what people are interested in. And I wanted to let you know, I was really paying attention to the questions because it helped me to better understand the district. And I appreciate your honesty and the way that you shared things. You were, I think, really straightforward, put things out, as I call them, good to bad and ugly. What I liked most is that, I think, from that conversation, and I had an opportunity to interview some of you so far, that it's a common belief that you really have a foundation in place and very, a lot of really talented people to use as a springboard to provide an excellent education for everyone to find those efficiencies in the system and really have this operation move forward in a positive direction. And I hope that that feeling doesn't just happen with the school board as you're leading by example, but the things that are happening here at the board and in the schools, and as the school is involved in the community, that that morphs into excitement within the community, and the community sees many of the positive things that Winchester has to offer. So I think we're on a terrific trajectory to make a big difference. So I thank you for that opportunity. And I'll talk more about that when I speak to the entry point later on the agenda. So thank you. And Kevin, I really appreciate the fact that you provided some leeway in having me take a look with fresh eyes at the agenda of the things during the interviewing process. One of the things that the school board said to me is, "We really would like you to look with fresh eyes at the organization, how we do things, tell us the efficiencies, the things we're doing really well, what areas could be addressed to improve." And so that is my goal. I took that as a charge from the school board to set that as a goal for myself, to meet that direction that you would like to have followed. So thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have motion to approve lots of minutes. And these are some are public and non-public.
Right, so what you have on June 12th, you have a public, you have a non-public. And are you going to, Mr. Chair, do these one at a time, or do you take a motion and pass each?
I would like to do them one at a time.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 12th, 2017. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 12th, say aye.
Aye.
And there's non-public for that day?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public from June 12th.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the non-public minutes for June 12th, say aye.
Aye.
There's June 15th.
I move to accept the minutes from the regular school board meeting of June 15th, 2017.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Just one. On the first page for June 15th, under 2017-18 Budget Update Projects, Bathroom Bleachers, Blacktop Restripping. Second and five, says Eltakar, she made a motion for the bleacher repair. And then it's Tama, B. Klansky, did not agree with the electric motor in the bleachers. I just want to make sure that that sentence doesn't read that "I didn't agree with the electric motor in the bleachers." So do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. So how do you?
Maybe just B. Klansky did not agree with the electric motor in the bleachers should come before the second, or even during the discussion part, so Kate Zan wants to schedule the bleacher, and maybe after that paragraph. I just don't want it to sound like that I didn't agree as well.
Sure.
That's because there's a comma there, probably, there were periods or something.
Put it down to a different line?
Yep. So I second the motion with that change.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for June 15th with corrections, say aye.
Aye.
There's non-public too.
So you note that the next set of minutes, there were two sets of non-public?
Yep.
Put the two of them together, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the non-public session from June 15th, 2017, and the second section of that same date, or the second set of that same date, June 15th, 2017.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving all minutes, all non-public minutes from June 15th, say aye.
Aye.
I see, I could have said issue one, issue two.
Next one. June 20, sorry, June 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 19 minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for our board meeting on June 19th, say aye.
Aye.
And the 29th.
How about for non-public, of June 15th?
I'll do that one.
Who did that?
Is that a duplicate? That must be a duplicate.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 29th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for June 29th, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is our principal's report.
For the non-public, for the 29th. And let me just, and I think I just cut the, why you said?
Is that why it said, this should just be June 29th?
So that should say June 29th on the non-public?
Okay.
With June 29th. And then there was just one minor revision in the participants in the non-public. I was there.
Oh, okay. On the ones of the 29th?
Non-public, the 29th, which right now says the 15th, that's all.
Let's bring back the non-public minutes for June 29th for our next meeting. Okay? So we'll bring back non-public for June 29th for our next meeting. And now we have our principal report.
Hi, Kevin. So summer school is in full swing here, where mornings, four days a week, my district chair is there. It's going really well. Students are doing different kinds of work, but keeping up on their skills and working through their special education goals with teachers in the building and paraprofessional support. There have been very few bumps or hiccups, it's going pretty smoothly. The custodial staff is working around summer school. They didn't stop planning their room assignments and their order of operations in order to be out of the way of students, and students are being really respectful about needing to change their routes as they travel around the school, as things are getting cleaned up. The next thing I have is that Mike attended the most recent Winchester emergency operations team meeting at the police station a couple of weeks ago, an update on evacuation plans and action items for drills and things that need to happen when school starts. Topics of discussion at that meeting.
Did they schedule another meeting? Do they follow up from that meeting?
I'm not sure if they've scheduled another meeting. I don't have a date for that.
Okay.
And then the next thing I have for you is just an update on staff positions. As you know, we were still looking for art, core language, and math positions. And we have seen some sample lessons this week and have been impressed with some candidates, so we will be seeking a non-public later on to talk about some nominations.
For all three?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Who is eligible for summer school?
Special education students who meet the criteria for extended school year is actually the term used. So they have to demonstrate a significant loss in skills after long-term vacations. So those decisions are made in the spring, after teachers have evaluated what happens after Christmas break and after the week-long vacations that we have during the school year.
So it's potentially children who are coding, special ed, or anyone that might need remedial work?
No, they have to be identified for special education. And the next thing on my agenda is the Summer Summit, which is coming up the first week in August. I attended the Summer Summit facilitators meeting last week in Concord to prepare for the work that we will do as a school team there. Ten of us are attending. We have really nice representation from across the building. Barb DePue, Amy Hill, Erin Proffert, Hannah Gagnon, Stephanie Tomala, Mel Harrison, Abby Trusdell, Mike Dupree, Dr. Gee, and myself will all be attending the summit. What is really nice about Summer Summit is that there's a lot of built-in team time to be working on a goal for the school. This year, we outlined our goal to be around parent and community engagement and school climate. Some things that we'll definitely be working on there are continuing our work on core values and the school mission that we started with our staff this school year. We'll be looking at the family and school contact, which is a requirement of our Title I program, and looking at expectations and school climate initiatives for the upcoming school year.
Do we have any parents going to that?
I have. I was going to answer that question if we, but I don't think you have for a few years.
We haven't. It gets tricky when we have people who are not staff members, because there is a spike in proportion and some different things.
And there's some of the, some of the team building time is really more focused towards the educators team building.
Right. But many of our participants are parents of students, or grandparents of students in our school, so they bring another perspective as well. And Barb DePue is the president of our PTA, and Amy Hill is active on our PTA as well, as well as Abby and Mel, so they bring those perspectives to the team. And we'll report back to staff and to the board after our time at the summit this year. And then the cast meetings are still happening throughout the summer. Mike Dupree and Dr. Gee attended the last cast meeting, and the next one is on August 10th, and I believe they're both attending that meeting as well. It was a nice way for Dr. Gee to be introduced to some of the services in town and some of the organizations that work to support the school and our families at the same time.
Is that August 10th, the same place, same time?
Yeah, it is 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m. at Applewood?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a ton of resources that sit in that room. I've had an opportunity to attend a few times, but it's a very difficult time for, you know, for a lot of people.
Yeah. So other than that, we've been busy around here, interviewing for positions, meeting with staff members, and meeting with Dr. Gee to talk about upcoming year and plans.
Very good. Anybody have any other questions for that? All right, moving on, on our agenda, a smarter balance report.
So I'm going to use this smart word.
Just a word.
So I just want to be clear that these SMART Balance results that I'm going to discuss are the last two years of SMART Balance results. I'm just going to do a summary of 1415 year and the 1516 year. We do have preliminary results for 1617 actually already, but they're not approved for release publicly. They're only for school district use at this point until they finalize them after end-of-year reporting is done and they apply the accountability rules for the state of New Hampshire.
So the first year was the practice year, right? So it doesn't count here?
I don't like that.
Yeah, I try not to say that. The first year was the first year.
But that's the way it is.
The benchmark year.
Sure. And they're not, we can say it is the benchmark year. But we can also say they are not still using their results in any punitive way or any ranking way for schools in the state of New Hampshire. With the changes in ESSA, there are a lot of things that are still up in the air. And anytime any of us attends a training at the DOE, Mel can attest to this, they keep saying, "So right now, we're planning to do it this way, but anything can happen." So with all of the changes at the state level, with a new commissioner, with a new governor, and changes in Washington coming down this way through federal grants and other things, there's a lot we don't know, including what will happen with accountability testing and requirements going forward. So Kevin, when we talked about it not counting, really all we mean by that is that the results were not being used to describe schools as any improvement or not at that time. Okay. So I'm going to just talk about 1415 and 1516 results in a summary, and what it means for our school. Maybe. So some important things to note about the test. That's not super helpful. There are four tests in the assessment. So the first one is the Language Arts, what's called the computer adaptive test. The next one is Language Arts performance task, then a math computer adaptive test, and a math performance test. So there are four tests. They sit for seven one-hour sessions over a period of about five weeks to take the test. So we don't ask them to sit for seven hours at one time, and we don't ask them to sit for one hour seven days in a row either. We try to spread them out to avoid some testing fatigue. For what grades? Grades three through eight here, and then also 11th grade takes the SAT for their accountability test at the high school. The whole thing is on the computer. So on a performance task, when they're typing an essay, they are typing an essay into the computer. All of the reading that they're doing is reading on the screen. Scaled scores and cut scores are some things that we talk about when we're talking about SMART Balance results. The scores are presented as scaled scores, which are accounting for the points that were obtained by the student, and then they're statistically adjusted to become a standardized score so that you can compare them across grades and across years. Scores are represented on a continuous vertical scale, from 2,000 to 3,000, and then the expectation is adjusted for each grade level, so that you can compare the growth of students across years. Cut scores are the score at which it's determined that a student meeting that score can be described by the next score achievement level descriptor. So there are four levels, level four, level three, level two, and level one. The cut score is the score at which you go from level one to a level two, or level two to a level three, or a level three to a level four. So when we're talking about achievement levels, a level four is when a student has exceeded the achievement standards and demonstrates advanced progress toward the expected mastery and knowledge of skills to put them in a position to likely succeed in future coursework. Level three is exactly the same, other than it says the student has met the achievement standard and demonstrates progress toward the mastery. And level two, the student has nearly met the achievement standard. And level one, the student has not met the achievement standard. So when we're talking about scores on SMART Balance testing, I will be reporting to you the percentage of students who have either met or exceeded the standard. So we'll be talking about students who have scored at the level three or the level four rank. Any questions so far? So 2014, 2015, that's the first year of the test. Again, these are percentages of students meeting or exceeding the achievement standard. For English Language Arts, you have first in the column Winchester, and then New Hampshire, so that you can see the comparison. And then over here, mathematics for Winchester and for New Hampshire. At the bottom of each of the grade levels, what's overall, so if we take all of the students in the school, and then the number of students who achieved, meeting, or exceeding the achievement standard, 34% of Winchester students met or exceeded the achievement standard in English Language Arts, and 27% for mathematics. In those same categories, 58% for New Hampshire, and 47% for math for New Hampshire. So when we look at the 2015 and 2016 scores, this chart is set up exactly the same way. We can look at percentage of students meeting or exceeding the achievement standard in each of the grade levels, and then overall for the school. On this next slide, it's showing you growth by cohort. So it's important to note that when you're looking at the 1415 to the 1516 school year, if you're looking at third grade across both of those charts, you're looking at two different groups of kids. So this chart that's up now and is in your packet shows you the fourth graders who were the previous year's third grader, the percent change in meeting and exceeding the standard. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any questions on that? So there's no change recorded for the third graders because that's their first year taking the test. Any questions here before we move on? One thing that I thought was important to note here is that Winchester's overall percentage for meeting and exceeding the achievement standard was up two percent, was up by two from the previous year, as was New Hampshire's. So New Hampshire had been at 58%, and then went to 60%, as we were at 34 and went to 36. So the rate of growth was the same there, and exactly the same in math as well. Everybody okay to move on? So things to note, as I said, our growth is consistent with the statewide trend, but we need to be clear that our starting point was lower than the state average. And so what that means is that we have a lot of growing to do to catch up to where the state average is. So we need to expect a more drastic growth rate for us to catch up, and then hopefully surpass the state average for meeting and exceeding the achievement standards in this test. So Mr. Dupree and Dr. Gee and I had some conversations about the scores, and what we talked about was a need to project out what will our growth look like. was a need to project out what will our growth look like? What is our goal? And so as you look at this chart, we have 2015, 16, 17, and then a projection for the next three years. We're in the end, we meet or surpass the state average for meeting and exceeding the achievement standards, and that's accounting for a steady growth rate in the state's percentage. Any questions about that graph?
When you say state growth rate, you mean this, you're accounting for a certain percentage of growth statewide?
Right.
And then of course, our growth rate is that rate plus?
Plus, right. So I'm accounting for the two to three points of growth that the state has achieved over the last couple of years. And then here's a similar graphic for Math. And we're just being really clear that our Math scores are low. Our percentage of students meeting and achieving the standards is low. It's not acceptable, and that is our needed trajectory. So we're talking about a steep increase there. So we've talked a lot about this being an opportunity. We have almost three years of data to be comparing. When I say almost, we actually have three years of data, but we can't really talk about this years yet. So we have almost three years. We can see in the data where are our most significant strengths, at which grade levels is something going right, with which cohorts are things going really well, and within which strands of the subject matter do we have some strengths. So we need to be looking at and talking about what we're doing well as a school with the staff. We need people watching each other, doing things really well, what's happening in these pockets that's going well, and how can the rest of us do that also? But we also need to be looking at what needs to change. So where are our significant weaknesses? If it's at a grade level, if we're looking at a grade level that's consistently performing below, we need to be looking closely at the curriculum, identifying what needed resources there are, and targeting professional development for those teachers, for that team. If it's in a cohort, and when I say cohort, I'm talking about a group of students as they move through the school. So if their scores are consistently lower when they were third graders, again when they were fourth graders, and again when they were fifth graders, we need to be looking at stacking staff and resources for interventions with those particular groups. What do we need to be providing to those particular groups of students in order to help them perform better? If the weaknesses are in a subject, we need to be looking at the curriculum and the fidelity with which it's being presented, and identifying needed resources, and in this case, it would be school-wide professional development. So if we're looking at an overall weakness in data and statistics, then we need school-wide professional development on teaching students with data and statistics. So here's what I can tell you, looking at the three years of data. In Language Arts, we have a significant weakness on the performance task, which involves reading informational text sources, two or three of them depending on the grade level. It then involves using details from the text to write an original essay. Some students are asked to write an informational article, some are asked to write an argumentative essay, and some are asked to write a narrative, using the same two or three resources that all of their peers read. They then are expected to edit for grammar, mechanics, organization, and elaboration. The task here, the performance task, has looked the same over the three years that we've taken it. So we took it the first year and we said, "Wow, okay, this is what they're doing now." We took it last year and we said, "It hasn't changed much." And we took it the third year, and it's really still the same. And it's the same across grade levels. The job is the same. The difference is how complex the text is and how many sources they have. But their task, what they're asked to do, is the same from third grade to eighth grade. So what we know will be happening is that our students will have more modeling practice and intervention with this type of writing in the same format before the 2018 test. So we know the format, we have the tools, we have laptops at every grade level. We know what we need to be doing. Students need to be reading text online, and they need to be able to use the details to write an original essay of all three types regularly. So that's something that we will be working on. In Math, again, the performance task. This is a complex, real-world problem with multiple steps, where students are expected to apply many different components of math to solve a problem. Their answers on all the steps are dependent on getting an accurate answer on step one. So that attending to precision that we talk about in the Math Practice Standards is really important here. Writing and communicating in Math is another piece of it that our students have struggled with, and that means explaining your reasoning, comparing two different models, describing an error in someone else's thinking. So students might be given a math problem that someone else has solved, and they have to determine where that person went wrong and what they should have done instead, and then they have to write about it. So what we know is our students will have more modeling, practice, and intervention of this type of problem solving prior to the 2018 test. So right now, in every grade level, a performance assessment is required for every unit that they teach. So we need to take a closer look at those performance assessments and make sure that they're using similar formats to multiple steps with dependent answers and having to explain their reasoning. Something else that really needs to be happening that we'll be working on is collaboration in Math. As students struggle to explain their reasoning and compare two models and decide which one is better, we need students thinking about having Math conversations. So as students are working in small groups to solve complex problems together, they're becoming more accustomed to communicating about Math. And if they are comfortable communicating about Math with their peers, they'll be more comfortable communicating about Math on their test. So what's new? Math professional development is something that will be new. Math in general will be a topic for professional development as we begin the school year for 2017-18. Teaching Math has changed, and our teachers are in need of more support to focus on Math practices before content. So we have purchased some professional books called Math in Practice by Susan O'Connell. It's not just a professional text, but also comes with a supplemental guide that has practical lessons and sample units and sample lessons that help teachers focus on the real Math practices. What makes someone a good mathematician? How students should be thinking about Math, instead of focusing on the algorithms and the procedure of doing that. So along with that, we'll be putting some expectations into our professional learning communities that includes working to analyze our practice in the context of those Math Practice Standards. At that point, we'll be evaluating what else might be necessary to include into a strategic plan for school-wide professional development in coming years, over the summer, whenever that needs to happen. What else is new? Real-time assessment. So something that's coming to Winchester for this year is that schools are now able to access interim assessments of the SMART Balance test. So there are assessments that we can go in as teachers and sign our kids into, and they're short versions. You can select the standard that you're looking at. So if you've got a group of kids, you've looked at their results, and you've seen that they are weak in this specific standard, you can select that standard. It's a short assessment in the same format as the summative assessment, and it's scored immediately. So grade levels will interim assess identified standards at least one time prior to the summative assessment. So what we're looking for there is for grade levels to identify a standard or multiple standards that they're really needing to monitor throughout the year, and everyone in the grade level should be assessed on that standard. Students who are struggling with that standard and receive an intervention on it can then take the interim assessment again to see if they've made growth on that standard. So that's what I mean there when I say at least one time. Everyone in the grade should have it one time, and those who are receiving an intervention to improve their performance should receive it more than one time. Does that make sense? And what else is new? NWEA progress monitoring. You might recognize NWEA as our map testing, and it is. But in addition to the interim assessments and the map test, they have another promising technology option where it takes our map testing scores for each student and identifies areas of weakness for that student, and then suggests tutorials and activities that that student can do for practice, or tutorials that the teacher can watch to see which parts students might be missing in a particular skill area. And then these assessments can be done throughout the year to monitor progress. That means that we have more tools for intervention. Either of those two monitoring tools can be used by any member of our staff. The only thing that has to happen is I need to assign them. So Title I staff can use those assessments, paraprofessionals can use those assessments, teachers can use those assessments, I could use those assessments if I wanted to, so that we can form groups, intervention groups, and we can monitor students appropriately. So they can be used to assess achievement, to monitor the progress, and to identify areas of strength and weakness for each student. So in addition to establishing the annual benchmarks and monitoring goal progress and implementing updated instructional practices and providing focused Math professional development and refining and focusing professional learning community work and assessing real-time interim assessments and using Skills Navigator to monitor progress, we will also be implementing strategies to help us create a culture of performance excellence at the Winchester School. So the goal there is for that culture to translate into a desire for our students to do well on this test. So what we really need is whole-school buy-in to get the school involved in what we're calling assessment excitement for SMART Balance. So in the end, it's going to come down to belief. We need to believe in each other. We need to believe in our students. We need to use no excuses and just hard work. We recognize we're in a place where we can't be, and there are things we need to do to get us where we need to go. Any questions? Yes?
First of all, thank you, Val. Greatly appreciate the information. I think I'll probably have more questions after, but I have a couple off the top of my head.
Sure.
The first one is, we only focus on meeting or exceeding. So what about the numbers for the students who are not at all? Obviously, the plan encompasses bringing those students up, but I wonder how they're, are they monitored in the same way?
Yeah, so I'm only reporting to you percentages of students who have met or exceeded.
Okay.
But all of the progress monitoring will happen for all students.
Right.
And we'll definitely be looking closely at the students who have scored at that Level 1 performance. Because we've talked about over the years and that culture and motivation comes into play. Sometimes you look at the names who are in that Level 1 and you go, "What? How did that happen?"
Yep.
So we have to figure out how did that happen? And there are a lot of different things that can come into play. We've got several students who performed really well on the map test, and then when they sit down in front of SMART Balance, they bond. So what is the problem? Is it the typing? Is it the amount of reading? Is it motivation? There are a lot of things that can go on, but that's our job to figure out what it is.
My next question was, the Skills Navigator?
Mm-hmm.
That's student-specific. So every last student can be monitored in the same, in the same way?
Right. So every student who takes the map test, which is just about every student.
Yep.
It links to that, and so we get a report of where their strengths and weaknesses are, and then it identifies areas where they have the potential to make the most growth and areas where they have the most striking weaknesses that should be worked on in interventions.
As you were going through this and we were talking about meet exceeds and the standards, I felt like it very closely mirrored all of the work that you've done in standard-based reporting, report cards. And so I'm wondering, I'm thinking, you know, is this, is this also identifying some areas within our own rubrics?
Sure.
Where there's opportunity for?
Sure.
Meeting those goals together so that you're meeting one goal with multiple?
The other nice thing about the interim assessments is that there's a training piece for teachers where they are trained to score any writing assessments that might be part of it. Because the interim assessment is scored immediately by the computer, but if there's a writing piece, that's not scored immediately by the computer, so the teacher has to score it. So the teachers do this short training and then are provided with the writing rubric, but it's used to score student writing on the summative assessment. So we can take a look at those rubrics and match them up with grade-level writing rubrics. And something that has been a goal that we need to get back to in this district is having a vertically-aligned writing rubric. So what is the expectation for mastering at grade 1, at grade 2, and grade 3? And it should follow along that same writing rubric.
So in my mind, I'm hearing you say calibrate.
Sure.
The teachers need to be on the same.
Calibrate, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what we say when we talk about audits.
Yep.
So, you know, the teachers need to be on the same page so that Teacher A and Teacher B are staying the same, are grading it the same way so that the number remains as consistent as possible.
And Mel and Bambi could tell you that that's somewhere that this district has been in the past. That was protocol for score and writing.
Yep.
You took the writing from the whole grade, and all the teachers sat down with it, and they scored together, sometimes on a Sunday morning. And we got away from that when we were using prescribed curriculum after NCLB first came into play. So getting back to some of those best practices that we know is something that can be really important here. Any questions? Okay, and as soon as our results are created for public consumption, I'll bring those back in the summary.
You know, the last time we got one of these reports, we spent a lot of time at the board meeting saying, "Why are these numbers so low?" And I understand why some people might want to agonize over, you know, why these numbers are so low, but I'm more interested in figuring out what needs to change and setting goals and making sure that we're going in the correct direction. And I'm also, because if you look at the numbers and if you look at the results, you will see, you know, some trends when it comes to grade level and classes, and I understand that in some situations, we're doing the best we can with those situations. We have to know as a board, what does the school need in the area? What do our teachers need in the area of professional development? What can the board do to make a difference in that area, to make our staff stronger, better, to educate these kids the best way in which the staff knows how? What are we lacking as a school, as a community together? Because the students are the students, the staff is the staff, the board is the board. I mean, I like how you're asking, or you're saying that the whole school has to buy into the plan. That includes everyone, not just, not just the staff, but the board, the entire school as a whole. So the board needs to know. I know it was a focus of the school to make sure that it was important for every student to be comfortable in front of a laptop, in front of a computer, because as you said, they have to be in front of this computer for a long time. They have to be used to the keyboard, and I think the board has been able to respond to that. What else can the board do to make? What else can the board do to make, to make sure that we're going in the right direction? I think we are going in the right direction. I'd like to run into the right direction, and I know that.
Well, we're going to be, because we have some aggressive goals on this chart. I think professional development's going to be pretty active next year.
Yeah.
And I understand that in regards to professional development, we have some parameters that we have to work with too. But the board needs to know. If there is a pressing need, then the board needs to know.
And that's, that's been really apparent in the last couple of years of budgeting with some increases to professional development outside of the collectively bargained professional development lines. And so that's an important trend that the board has gotten on board with as we've budgeted. And the laptops at each grade level is something that I think will be huge. Even though we had many laptop carts this year, anytime there was testing, carts had to be pulled and only one cart would be used at a time.
Yep.
You know, in different locations. And we've set ourselves up to be able to have a testing cart with plenty of laptops on it, which will be an extra cart available when we're not testing.
Yep.
But even with that cart out of circulation, it's still a laptop cart at every grade level. So that lets teachers know you can count on being able to have this technology, and if they know that we count on it, they'll use it much more.
Part of their usual regular curriculum of day-to-day.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we talked about, I think we kind of touched on the buy-in too, the last time we got the report, making sure that, you know. You know, it's funny, how do we, how do we let our students know that this is important? You can't just, you can't sit here and not try. I don't know, you know, how we let our student body know that this is an important test. I can't, I mean, this sounds like torture to me. I mean, four tests, seven hours of testing. I, I.
We could have a board demo. You could take.
No, thank you.
Oh, because there's nothing I like more than a standardized test.
We could do interim one where a live score is.
Kind of reminds me of that game show, Are You Smarter Than a Fifty?
People want to really get the chair.
But Dr. G and I talked a lot about that, that very thing, and talked about not just needing to motivate for the test, but to have a change in, in the attitude in general towards achieving high standards and excellence across the district.
All right, Kurt, you know, to me, you know, the school owns this, the board owns this, the community owns this. We acknowledge it, we move on, we set a goal, and we get there. Does anybody else have any questions for Val in regards to?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Val. Good presentation. I'd like to say your comments are so right on task because it is the professional development, that's, whatever's going to happen, the miracles each day happen in the classroom. And so it really is between teaching and the learning that happens. And, you know, I used to say a lot as a principal, that the teachers perform miracles every day in rooms as kids learn. So all our things really has to be focused on, on that, elevating instruction and that learning, and the rest will follow. The benchmarks, as you decided, technically, we'll continue to look at where we are and where the professional development would be, you know, along that continuum. But I'm excited to hear, when I was talking to Val, just the enthusiasm she has about, "Let's, let's get going," and, you know, working with the staff and, you know, having everybody a part of this, getting the buy-in, so.
And enthusiasm is infectious too, so.
Okay, business manager report.
Uh, yes. So for the sixteen-seventeen audit, our auditors were here Tuesday to start the sixteen-seventeen audit. It's very nice to work in real time, so we're working very quickly to get this audit completed. They are going to be returning August twenty-first and twenty-second, and the goal that was set is to have that completed by November thirtieth. We are finalizing the fifteen-sixteen audit. They took some more information on Tuesday to finalize those. And the great news that we have is that the twelve-thirteen-fourteen-fifteen audits are bound and in the office for review. This is what they look like.
So is there, is there an electronic version?
There is. I do have an electronic version.
Are we supposed to have that on our website?
We usually have the most current year on the website.
And they'll be also available, time off, delicious when we're planning a sex down hall.
Because the board of selectmen had previously requested under right-to-know copy of the audit, so it's just.
No, it's what we should be doing.
We're good to deliver it on there. You good on that?
Yep.
So the grant update, we had a handout today with the grants. Looks like this. It'll be in your packet. Hope you all had a chance to review it. I did contact Matt Welch today, sent another email out, but I guess he's out, he's been out all week, so thought I'd try again. But I'm just looking to expedite the, the two months that we're looking for for May and June. Those have been all in great. And last I have is the finance committee met to review the manifest. We have two manifests because we're working in two years. We're still getting bills in for last year, so I separate them out so that we can account for them accurately.
Do you want to come back to them?
Steve is still appealing.
Yeah. All right, let's get back to the manifest.
There is a lot that you previously approved too that are in the front of that, but it's going to the finance committee.
Steve, can you just grab me that front little?
Yep.
Yeah, just hand me the whole packet. I'll figure out which is which.
So we have. There should be two payrolls for June thirtieth and then accounts payable. And there's payroll for July third, and two payrolls for July fourteenth.
Which is that interim all in the record, but. Hey, I'll just pass them down to you so you can double-check all the numbers when you're, when you're ready. We had a payroll manifest for June thirtieth for six hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Given you want to approve each of these, these have already been signed, so really we just want to enter.
They're just going into the minutes.
Right. A payroll for six thirty for twelve thousand five sixty-five fifty-seven. An accounts payable for six thirty, sixty-three thousand one ninety-eight sixty-nine. Payroll seven-three, four thousand four thirty-two seven-two. Payroll for seven-fourteen, one hundred and twenty-two thousand fifty-one dollars eighty-five cents. And a payroll for seven-fourteen, seven, excuse me, seven-fourteen for five seventy-five sixty-two. Someone's all down to you with the, with the binder of two copies. You want all the details, right there?
Yep. We can move on to the superintendent report.
All right, the first item would be the review of entry plan. So if you go back to my earlier comments of when I was being interviewed, you were looking at things that you thought were important to be able to take a look at. One of them was to look at all your documents that you have for school board policies, different contracts, the school improvement plans, the facilities plans, the staff, employee handbook, it's pretty much this. But going, I've begun to go through those, and part of the entry plan, I've continued to go through those and see what things need to be revised, and eventually tie all those documents together, so if there's something that is happening at the school board level in a policy, to make sure that that is populated in each one of the other documents, so there's consistency across the board. And I'm looking forward to doing that. I'll learn a lot about the district and also be able to provide more leadership in the continuity in all those areas in working with the staff. One of the things that we talked about was improving operation efficiency as well as elevating the quality of education for all students. So those would be two of the primary areas that I will focus on as we move forward. We, since we live in a global economy, it really is about providing the students with the knowledge and the skills to be able to be competitive. And as we work in the classrooms, we work with students, that, that should be, you know, extremely important as students go on to Keene High. One of the goals I would have is, as I was watching in the future, how many students are in the foundation, how many students are in the medium, whatever that name is, and how many are in the partners and doing enrollment. I would like to see really good numbers of that, when we're feeding into Keene High, a highly competitive group of students, so. That's, I think that's what you want to look across the board because you still have ownership of them when they're moving forward. We should be watching how they're doing academically and how well were they prepared. I will be having a meeting with some of the administrators when I, next week, and Taylor Redcliff will be going with me and Jessica Phillips to meet with them and have conversations and sort of get to see what kind of ties we can make to follow us, follow the classes and see how they do. So this document really captures a lot of activities that we're doing to collect qualitative and quantitative data. So I can put that together in a fairly comprehensive report and give that to you in January. And then I'll have recommendations in there and we can use that maybe as a working document, as to which things that you feel are priorities for you as a board. So I think it's self-explanatory in terms of the people, the questions. I would like to say that the questions are there as a guide. What I find in interviewing is I like to listen to people, take the conversation, and talk about things that are important to them, and I miss that opportunity sometimes when you get too structured and asking questions. So if, if you can start the process and then listen, they will really grab the things that are important to them, concerns that they have, and present to me the things that are important, not just to them but to the district. So, any questions on that?
When you're reaching out to the community to interview members of our community, are you looking for volunteers? Are you looking to try to snag certain groups or?
That's a great question. There's the informal and the formal process to that. The formal process would be, I plan to meet with each of the selectmen, for example, and interview them. The informal would be going to the diner and, you know, having breakfast and talking to people and finding out what their perceptions are. You know, you, you really have to blend that. I hope to be able to go to, I don't know, is it PTA or PTO meeting?
PTA.
PTA and, you know, talk to them and some of the people that are very involved in the school as well as those that are not involved, you know, why. So I don't know if that answers your questions.
No, that would answer.
It's a holistic approach.
It's going to happen organically. There are going to be certain people that come out to you and say, "I'd love to answer some more specific questions."
My door will always be open and during the interview process, it had come up, one of the questions I asked, I did have a chance to interview you. Actually, I've interviewed everyone except him so far, and I'll be following back again with a loop. But one of the questions is, "Who are the, who are the people in the, in the community that you would say influence?" And that was an important question for me to get because you helped to steer me in the direction of other people I want to talk to that I wouldn't know about. So that was a really fun given table, and every time I do that, I learn so much more. So if you have suggestions as to check in to say, "Have you had an opportunity to talk to so-and-so," or someone shares with you, they would like that, please pass that on to me. And for any board member, this would be a good person to talk to, and I will look at that and make arrangements. What do you got, expert?
And you're looking for a motion to approve your entry?
Yeah, later on, yes.
Under action.
Thanks. So under action, that's it.
Okay.
The, the next thing is the review of the MOU. This is something that I think you have become familiar with over the process over the last couple of months. We have not had an MOU for a while with access. I worked with the attorney. I think you were involved in that some, right?
Probably.
Not as much?
No.
So I was up in New Hampshire, we were coming back and forth to take a look at, you know, what are the components that belong in there? So, you know, the purpose of that is to provide, what is the relationship between access within the district? And then what are our responsibilities and what are their responsibilities? So that's really the whole point of the document. And I think this captures it pretty well. I had been reviewing by access, and we have some lines in there for their board to sign it as well. So we're looking for you to make a motion to renew that contract for a year.
It's a one-year contract, correct?
Correct.
Seventeen, eighteen, seventeen?
Yes.
And you said there was buy-in from access and overall agreement with this one?
They had a chance to review it and, is it, you bet that, that I hadn't been communicating with. And our, my last one call with her, which was actually probably a couple of weeks ago, was, it's all set on our end. But, you know, she also, like, I have to answer to a board, a school board, or she has to answer to a board director. I don't anticipate any problems at this time, so we'll just look forward and hopefully get that one in place. There's another MOU that I'll bring to you at a future date that probably should be placed. The, any questions?
Do you need a motion on that now?
We're going to. That's what I was thinking. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, and it's a change in, in that too.
That's fine. You don't have to apologize for that.
You know, as I'm getting.
It's very efficient.
Let me ask this question, because I was looking at some of the members. I'm wondering, I did this for one board some years ago, that if you had a notebook prepared like this with tabs in it for each meeting?
Oh, we do.
We do.
And I brought that to the meeting. Oh, you do have it.
We have, I, I was traveling light today, so I just don't have that binder.
Me too.
So you all have, because we've done, prepared, we'll get the tabs for you.
And the tab, Marie did it, and the tabs are in there with all of our. I think, I think Steve has his.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, thanks.
That's job for you.
Good job, Dave. That's your.
That's one job you've ever had.
Yeah, we do.
I was looking at Kevin, going, gee, what does he do when he gets home? Because I remember years ago when I was on five years.
Don't ask.
I just got these piles and they just kept growing, growing. They made a great fire in the winter.
I specifically didn't want to bring my big bag today with me, so.
Yeah, last year I did, I got backseat of my car.
Mine, or?
So this next one, it's kind of an exploratory conversation a little bit in terms of, you know, looking at efficiencies for the district. First of all, I have to come in and peg you for, the notes that you take are unbelievable. They're just so comprehensive and so complete. I tip my hat to you. They're amazing. I was, as I began the process of looking at, making sure we're complying with things, I had come across the, you know, responsibility that the minutes need to be made public or accessed by public within three days or seventy-two hours. And so I thought, you know, could we find a balance? I would like to be able to, as you know, get, get your packet out on Thursdays, because there's a lot of stuff here.
Yep.
And so you would have Friday in the weekend to have several cups of coffee and move your way through it. So if you came to the meeting, you know, you felt prepared and you could just move along with the business. So I don't know if you take shorthand or you just write that. So I don't know if you take shorthand or you just write that.
I just write that.
I don't have that skill. Or if I did, you couldn't read anything that I wrote.
Well, nobody else can.
Okay. So they're not, they're legible to you, but someone else may have trouble reading them? That's my case.
Yes.
So I guess I was wondering, does that feel like a really undue hardship if we had to get them within three, four days after the meeting?
The non-public, public, too.
I'm just talking about the public, I guess, for now. The non-public, I think, if they're not sealed, is five days, I'm going to say.
No, it's the other way around. Like seventy-two hours for the non-public and five business days for the public.
The public, okay. So could that work or, I don't want to have you extra pressure on me.
If that's what works for you, well, let's make sure it does.
Right. We need to make sure that before Peggy leaves for the evening, we're making copies of her minutes that she has right now because those can substitute, you know, something that is pretty to doubt.
Did I misunderstand you? Did you say they're probably not legible to other people?
They are legible enough.
Okay.
All right.
Good. So now we just need someone to go tell you this copy.
I've used it before.
No, that's great.
Did that work out on them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So she'll take a copy and then the minutes will be available within the five days, which gives you the time to get the packet out.
Correct.
Okay.
So that you can have them. Because my concern in terms of efficiency was just the way that the process was and probably had so many things on your plate to, it's got to be, I don't even know how you remember what happened on, you know, the twelfth.
Three leading owners.
So that would speed up meetings right there because if you have them and you review them when you come to the meeting, you can read them, approve them.
And move on.
And move on.
Yeah.
So I think that will help everybody. So I, you know, I look at the organization as you really do serve, you know, you're the school board, but you serve as the board of directors. You govern the whole business, the whole entity. And my responsibility superintendent is to manage the operation of it, which is what the CEO does in a business. So if I'm doing my job well, then I'm preparing you with your packets. You have, you have the information, you have the options and the things that were considered for recommendations. You would be prepared to at least know what the recommendation would be. And then if you're comfortable with it, you move it. And if you're not, you'll bring some other issues up and I'll go back and take a look and come and bring it back again. And that's the, that would help the way I operate in that capacity. And if I'm doing my job, you can focus on policies and the budget and supervising you and not have to do a million other things.
Right. Accomplish your goals.
Yeah. So, so to that end, there was, there's a, there's two things here I'm going to jump. One of them is I'd like to be able to have a workshop and come up with a day that even if it's on a Saturday, everyone's going to crash for two hours or, you know, or in the morning. You know, at the end of your day, it's just so hard to, you know, come to a meeting for two hours. You're just not fresh and it's not you. I mean, that's just our human nature. So it would be nice if we could capture two hours somewhere that we could talk about the things, the goals, you know, what are you thinking about? What are the people thinking about for the vision? I could share that information. Val was talking about, you know, blending in a mission and the goals. That should, as you pointed out, that should all be broken together. So that would be an opportunity for me to share that as the teachers are working on their vision and the goals as well. And then we can blend that.
It's a great idea. If we do it at six AM, we'd be decent for it.
Maybe you would be.
You're up running at that point.
Not a good time.
So maybe at the end of the agenda, we could come back to that. Also, and I'm going to just jump ahead, in your packet toward the end of it, there is a, this has to do with efficiency, there is a calendar of school board meetings. And so far, we have on it the entire year that you have your school board meetings. Not sure about August, because I want to talk about just that one because we'll be away on the third, so.
I think we'll figure it out.
And then, and then policy, legislation, let's see how the name you are, action, subsidy. They have now selected the second Tuesday of the month, so we could populate that calendar with that. If everyone else that would be meeting fairly regularly could do that, then we would be able to post that calendar once at the town hall and the office and then only if something changed. And then as it approaches, we could, you know, post the agenda.
Yep.
So the other thing for me and for the administrators and probably for yourself, if you're trying to figure out another meeting time, you know, you know your board meeting, but boy, to be able to pick that up and say, transportation's here, policy's here, the school board's here, it might help you in your planning with your families, which evening you're not out. So I'm hoping at the end of this meeting, people will grab a day of the week.
Well, the finance committee has committed this year to meeting for every board meeting and we alternate between one hour before or fifteen minutes before. So on the first meeting of the month, we're doing an hour before and on the second meeting of the month, we're doing fifteen minutes.
And that's already on the calendar?
And that's, I think that's already on the, well, I see it, yeah, I see it on the calendar at least. Maybe I don't have it on the calendar. I see it for the first one.
Does that calendar say school?
This one says school board meeting calendar.
That's the one.
Okay.
And you're not on it?
The finance committee is listed for July. Yeah, but we're not listed for the rest.
Because I think they wanted to find out what, so if you know that the next time you meet, it's going to be for an hour, then now we'll know how to put that off.
Yep. So the first meeting of the month is at 5:30 and the second meeting of the month is at 6:15.
Thank you. At six fifteen?
Six fifteen. Yeah, we just need fifteen minutes to go over that.
Perfect. And I guess we already just, there are other, there are other meetings that, you had a list of these that we passed out?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, budget joint loss, joint loss meets quarterly, right?
Yes, and during the school year.
During the school year. So we need, we need the teacher employee input on that before we start scheduling times.
All right.
We've conquered Finance, High Committee. That also includes members of our community. So I mean, I'd like to get input from the committee.
We do have a meeting scheduled for the 27th, I believe, on this.
Yeah.
Shall I turn this up?
Yeah, I'm using that one for you.
And what time is that?
That one is 5:15.
And where is that?
Here.
Yeah. So maybe you just want to shoot me a message with what your best days are and.
What day of the week is that?
That's a Thursday.
Next day.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll talk to the group. Policy we took care of, negotiations we've taken care of.
That's as needed.
As needed.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be posted.
Yes.
New Hampshire School Board is basically just a report.
Just a report.
Scholarship Committee is a report. Correct, Val?
Yes.
Select Board Rep is, I'd like to have that conversation with the entire board, whether you want me to just go into them or if we want to rotate like we did before.
I think it's good to have.
I'd be happy to get involved and have.
You don't mind?
I think it's good to have all of our faces come in front of the select board.
Such a good meeting. It's really.
It's really.
We can get five months in right now if Kevin's doing the next one and who's next.
Yeah, just go, let's just go down the line.
I'll do August. What, what is August? The sixteenth, right? Because, or when, because we do the second, oh, August has one, two, three, four, August has five Wednesdays. So what is this month?
The second.
The second Wednesday, the ninth?
Yeah, I can, I think I can do the ninth.
All right, then I'll start in September. September, October, November. Why don't you throw Ben in there for every month?
Do you want to report out every month?
No, but he's there.
He's already there, so.
So those are one month that we just don't want anybody else to submit.
I'll thank you a lot. Thank you.
What is constitutes attendance at that meeting? Any ring board game?
Yeah, we have an ongoing, we're a part of their agenda every second meeting of the month.
We try to get it as soon as we can.
Right. And typically, our superintendent is there with a quick update on what's going on with the school. If he is not there, then it's our responsibility to give that update. And if there's any questions, we're there to answer any questions regarding the school.
There's no specific format?
It's very famous. It's very famous.
Okay.
Mostly, mostly.
Maybe one, my husband's not there.
Sick Bank meets as needed.
It hasn't been needed.
That's, you know, something to say to access dates because they do.
Policy, excuse me, professional development will meet after beginning of school.
Yep.
So we need to, we need school to start for that. We also need school to start for the technology committee and energy conservation facilities. We need Ben here. Transportation, we need Ben here. I mean, we take care of a couple of these.
Yeah, you guys take it.
But we need, you know, we need input from.
Yeah, thank you.
For professional development, Val, do we have a, we had a pretty set.
We were doing third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday.
Technology was pretty set, too, but, you know, I want to make sure the staff has it as well. So let's wait till the beginning of school year for those to get back to our calendar.
Who would I ask to know who was on the technology, who was on professional development? You'll be able to tell us.
Yeah, Val has our list.
And then I'll pass out the, this started to come around, but I thought it was the same thing. This is the, this is your school calendar. That's what it says on the top.
That's what it says on the top.
I can't see everything.
I'm on a refrigerator.
Did you get it?
They stopped there.
Don't I already have one?
This one's the school calendar, I think.
I thought right after the school calendar, I mean, the.
One's updated, this is updated.
Oh, okay.
I don't think there's nothing on that.
Yeah, I think we're good. I'll even put some out here.
Right. One of the school calendars doesn't have as many things on it, so. And then I'll talk later, but we got a couple of things on the business that we could discuss.
Okay.
If it's up, would you have known it was an action?
Yep.
As you know, Keene Green, his audit firm, has been working with Alicia, getting a little caught up from 2012 to the present, they're working, they're just cleaning up or wrapping up 2016 and then they're probably able to do the year we just finished. That gets to be obviously an expensive proposition. It was, I could see, you know, in excess of fifteen, you know, each year, seven years or more because you had, there was so much work to do to begin the cleaning up process and doing the research and tying things together. I think it was pretty close to fifteen this past year. Yeah, that's what it's budgeted. So it looks like there's a good relationship that was established with that firm and the district and they know it. So when we had a, the first contract that he gave us for the year 2017, I think this is in your packet, Rob Green, he has, this basically would outline all of the things that the auditors do. And this would be applicable to the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years.
Three years.
Yeah, it's a three-year contract. What I want to say is maybe twenty. No, I was right, actually seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So it'd be a three-year contract. And as you know, you have to do it annually anyways. So the thought behind it that Alicia and I was talking about was that he's familiar with the system, is there an opportunity here to maybe have some, a little bit of savings? So in having that conversation, we were pleased that he came back with a proposal which again is, if it's not in your packet.
Oh, it's here.
Is it in your packet?
Yeah.
Thank you. So the 2017 would be thirteen-five, 2018 would be thirteen-seven, 2019, 2010, 2011. So he gave us, it should be, this is the cover.
Yeah.
Take it for the time.
Yep.
Alicia, how much do we budget this year for the audit?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen?
So it was an opportunity to, you know, strengthen that partnership and recognize that, you know, we're willing to bring it to the board to say, we would recommend that you approve three-year contracts in the process. We're talking to Alicia, she seems to be satisfied with, you know, the auditors and the work they're doing. Certainly they're, as you will see, they're binding it out, they're bound. Audit is professional and seems to have all of the pieces that are required. When we come to a motion, Kevin, maybe you can include a motion to approve the contract with ours.
Sure.
Thank you. We got a couple of things to discuss. Don't require something that's important. That's it for now, I guess.
There was a couple of policies, did you want to quickly do those? Security records?
Oh, right. So there were two policies. And so this is again part of the efficiency and streamlining thing where, you know, we looked at policy, it's type of student records, policy JRA, and your policy really models the school board policy. So theirs hasn't been updated as well right now. But you'll notice on the second page, it should be in yellow, that it says, this procedure must be completed within thirty days or earlier after the principal has received a request for access. And then if you go to the RSA 189664A, you will note that the right to inspect and review the student's education records within fourteen days after the day the school receives the request for access. So I'm going to do this one.
Yeah.
So the thinking being that I'm hoping that it doesn't need a, like, first reading amendment that I notice and we come across things that just need a quick correction, that you could just put it under action item. I didn't really make it clear, but that's what B is supposed to be, a motion to approve the, the, just put JRA. And if that's accepted with the board, then I would continue to bring things to your attention that require minor fixes. And Kevin will probably talk more about what we discussed at the policy meeting.
You can do that.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Jason.
Alan, can you get back to the board when it comes to workshop dates that you were talking about? Maybe give the board via email, maybe three dates in the month of August that will work for you and see if anything coincides with the schedules for board members.
Great.
Okay?
Can you give me a framework for what time of day?
I don't mind morning, but six AM is, is not the morning for me.
Are we talking week?
That's still night time.
You mentioned, you mentioned a Saturday?
Yeah.
I'm fine with a Saturday.
I have some conflicts with Saturdays. Actually, I have conflicts with like every single Saturday.
Kind of morning?
Yeah.
Do you want to try afternoon?
Yeah.
Early afternoon?
Is that okay?
I'm fine with that as well, I'm away for at least one of those Saturdays, but otherwise pretty available.
Yeah, like mid-afternoon maybe? Sorry.
To be honest.
What about, what days of the week? Are those out of question?
They're not out of the question for me, but it would, you know, it would be after, probably after four.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. They're not out of the question for me either, but they would need to be in the afternoon.
So you're sitting in at, I think, two o'clock, two, four?
Yeah. Or, I mean, I could, I couldn't, I couldn't, I could, on a Saturday, I could make noon. I could probably make noon with advance notice.
Well, how about you look at your Saturdays and then I will put those out if, if, you know, like, every Saturday could be afternoon, noon would be on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I will look at Saturdays?
Saturdays.
At twelve thirty?
I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm just trying to get to Wednesday of next week.
No, no, I'll, I'll do that. So you can just come and have lunch and something to eat and coffee and have a little meeting.
Okay.
That's great. I guess some dates out, that's a good solution.
I'm pretty sure Saturday will work with that too. I'm pretty sure. Okay. So if you could get that out to the board, that would be great.
Will do.
Okay. All right, so can we move on to?
So now you're on your committee reports?
Right.
And those are for reviews are listed all on the back here, so I don't know if any, how do I do those for the past, which?
Well, what I'd like to do, actually, budget committee, I'd like to, referencing back to our calendar, I'd like to schedule our first budget committee now, so we know that it will be coming up. Generally, we start with, for the school budget, you know, we start on our side. And the talk of the budget really begins with the month of September. And I've always had a goal of having our budget done by Thanksgiving. I don't think I've ever hit that goal.
Oh, wait a minute. This past year, we were pretty close.
I don't think so.
We were held up not by our budget.
So I would like to schedule our first budget meeting for September twenty-eighth. That's a Thursday, that's an opposite Thursday of the school board meeting at six-thirty.
Unless you say otherwise, it's a wrong, you're liable.
Yep.
That includes, it's not just the committee, it's the board.
That's the board.
Yeah.
Would you say that date again?
September twenty-eighth, Thursday, September twenty-eighth. It will be from six-thirty, it will go no longer than eight-thirty.
What was that date?
September twenty-eighth. You free?
Let me check my eighteen calendar.
Yep.
We will cut you off at eight-thirty mid-sentence. If need be.
And as we get closer to that date, you know, we'll just remind everyone that that date is coming up. And we'll look at October and most likely October twelfth and twenty-sixth, we'll get filled up with budget meeting dates. Okay.
So you're thinking already of, well, that calendar, I would like to. So feel free to send in those dates and to really.
What are you looking at? I'll give you a look.
I went pale when you said budget. I'm just recovering. It's only July.
I mean, I just.
I get to.
Yeah, I'd like to model it like we modeled it last year, I think, you know, overall it worked really well. And considering the town side, I think, you know, what they ended up doing worked really well. So if we hit all our goals, you know, we'll be right on schedule and we won't be scrabbling at the last minute. So I don't mind mentioning it in late July. All right, so joint loss, we can skip over, finance committee met tonight. Keen High Committee has a meeting scheduled soon.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, excellent. And when we, when everyone gets together at that meeting, talk about.
A regular consistent.
Yeah. And at that meeting, if we could also talk about getting back together, we're going back to S A U twenty-nine, maybe after a couple of weeks of school. Typically, when we meet with S A U twenty-nine, they need to know well in advance, schedule some sort of meeting with us. So I'd like to put the feelers out there so they know that we would like to meet with them maybe a couple of weeks after the start of school.
Who's the, who's the, who is that?
That would be Superintendent Malay.
Oh.
And.
I mean, Dean.
Yep. And, and their school board chair.
Yeah, they're twenty-nine.
That should be a part of the agenda for the Keen High Committee. Negotiations?
I will need a non-public, it provides not dates.
Okay. Anything from the New Hampshire School Board Association?
No, I'm committed to updates at each board meeting.
Has anybody been getting emails from them again?
No, I haven't.
Because I noticed I don't.
I have not, I was actually going to say that, I wonder if, did we get blacklisted permanently?
Maybe we did.
Well, because we had our, our email got compromised, so perhaps we haven't.
That's a genuine question, because it can get blocked on the filter, and he has had to go in again and we accept some, so I could mention that to him.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea when the last time was that you received emails from them?
I could search in my email folder and tell you the last time I received an email from them.
If you want to shoot me an email with that. Date.
I know it's been, I know that it's been a few months.
Okay.
I'm sure we can shoot them an email too if you see them.
I've definitely got emails back and forth from Verret, but not from the, you know, there, New Hampshire School Board newsletter.
Yeah, do you check your spam when you get the weekly digest from the spam? How do you check that? Because a lot of times those automatic ones get caught in.
I haven't seen anything get caught lately.
Yeah, yes, okay.
I'm talking about spam folder, so I won't say out of line.
Can you reach out to, have you spoken to Verret Christina since July first?
Not since I've been here, but I, I know him and I've worked with him before. I've had the person, so would you like?
Would you reach out to him and tell him that the Winchester School Board is interested in having some sort of meeting with him like we had last year?
Yeah, a training session.
A training session.
Okay, great.
Ideally here in Winchester. Sometime in the month of, maybe September or October.
Yeah, that's a really good job.
Scholarship committee, nothing to report, I'm guessing. Select Board Representative, Alan and I talked to the selectmen last Wednesday night. Alan gave them a little history of, you know, where he's been, what he's done and what he plans on doing here in Winchester. And he opened it up to any questions and there were no questions. Nobody wants to ask one a question, it's very strange.
But they were very agile.
But as Alan said, you know, when it comes to, you know, the cast meeting, he, he says he'd like to talk, have an interview session with each of the selectmen. It's, I won't say it. Brave.
It will be impressive.
It will be impressive. Sick bank committee? Nothing, not until school starts. Professional development, not till school starts. Technology, not till school starts. Energy conservation, just, nothing new this time.
You guys should pick a date. Oh.
Will you reach out to Ben and schedule a date before our next school board meeting? We don't exactly know when that is, but quick of all that. Thank you. And transportation committee?
I will reach out to Ben on that one and we will discuss with Dr. G a regular meeting day.
Okay. Now, your first meeting was supposed to be when Tucker was on the call by, right?
Yes, but we, we have not scheduled Tucker to, to come, correct? Yeah, that, that, so that entire.
Hasn't happened.
Has not happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you just speak to that?
Absolutely.
I jumped the gun a little bit. I wanted to, you know, introduce myself and learn a little bit more about him, so I know that the transportation subcommittee, you know, wants to have that conversation. So Alicia and I had talked in and we had a kind of good conversation. We threw out some ideas that we talked about at the, the meeting, you know, what would happen if we owned the buses, do you provide direct service? Just tested the waters on that. It was interesting because he, he listened and he went, wow, that's, I don't know if anyone's thought of that before, because, you know, we were throwing out some interesting initiatives. So I'm kind of glad we did that now because he said, well, let me go back, talk to the councilman, talk to the mom and, and, you know, see. So I think that sort of set the table for having a meeting now where he'll be able to tackle it more intelligently with information and then you can explore even more things and see how, how they're reacting to that. So it might have saved some time.
Did you leave him with any kind of target for when we might try to get back together?
We reached out, to be honest, we reached out today.
Okay.
He hasn't returned the call to see if we could get some dates. I was hoping that I could throw up some dates with you to, to set up a meeting, but that didn't happen. So I think I'll have, we, once that call comes in, to reach out to the transportation. The next meeting will be the libel, I guess.
Perfect.
Any one that's reached out?
No. But I will say that, you know, it's going to be, it's important for that committee to.
Have some basis before we hit budget.
Yeah, yeah, hit the ground running so we can bring to, you know, when we have budget discussions about transportation, we can have some good discussion about what we see happening for next year. Okay.
Alicia, did I miss anything on that? You were at that meeting.
No, that was great.
That's others, okay, okay. Alicia takes coping to step, so.
Great. All right, and did I skip over, we had a policy meeting a couple of days ago here in the library and Alan talked about what he would like to bring to these policy meetings. Basically, a reorganization of our entire policy, policy book. Starting with page one, there is a, you know, there are a lot of policies, you know, just a little background, you know, we, I'm confident that our policy book has every policy that we are supposed to have as a school district, first of all. But there are still a lot of policies that need updating and a lot of them, you know, we can go through rather quickly, but they need updating. A lot of them come from two thousand and eight.
Have you checked to, you said you're confident that we do have all the policies that we need.
Right, but there, you know, there's an example tonight of like the policy that needs to be updated.
But I mean, like, all the transgender stuff and everything like that, we have.
We have.
And but remember, Kevin said updates, for example, it doesn't say, it's something documented, it's saying race, color, sex, it doesn't say gender. I, I don't know of the most recent one now talks about gender identity. So when you talk about updates, you know, we'll look at that to see what language changes that need to be made. I think one of the things that, that we'll find that we need to focus on and, and is when, I understand Verret Christina Kane did a good policy review and went through it, like Kevin said, probably went through the whole thing and said, you're in good shape. What he didn't know would be, okay, so here's the policy that directs the super to do X, Y, and Z, here's a policy that says, you know, want to program in this. What he did know is, did the next piece have it?
Right, what's on the opposite side of that?
Exactly. So that's where a lot of the work will be, that, okay, we have this, we have to do some work here to make what we're doing consistent with what you want as a board unless you decide you don't want that in the policy or you want a minimum. So I'm starting with, is the policy subcommittee, we talked about, you know, the leadership of the board and it made sense to handle anything that came up that needs immediate attention, that you need to select a new policy. So, you know, with, and there was an investment policy, so there are things in there that, you know, you need to do, but concurrently with that, we will start with school board policy, the government policies, how you operate, your protocols. And then, once we have that in good shape, it sort of sets the tone for the rest of the policy book. And there's a correlation I noticed in between some of your policies and, and documents that get developed based on the policies. So it's a great place to start.
And, you know, it's, it's very important and at the end of the day, you know, being school board members, you know, this is what we're really supposed to be focused on. And everything else is, is added on, but this is really supposed to be our focus, creating, implementing, enforcing policy for the Winchester school district. So we're a part of the schedule, the calendar that you've seen before. We're going to hopefully be working in, Mike into these meetings as well, you know, when the policies can revolve around something that's going on with the school, so.
And Marie will be joining you as well?
And Marie will be.
Marie will be, Alicia will be on those that deal with finance. And then either Mike or Val will be at a lot of those because, as you know, it ties to what's been happening at the school, the impact on the school, the staff, the kids. So it's, they just can't be done in that dimension.
Yep.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll fill that.
All right. I think we're, we're doing pretty good here. We're doing pretty good.
Yeah.
We're going to do action items?
Before we get to action, I do want to mention a couple of things. The website. As we get closer to the start of school, the website needs updating. And our prior superintendent was the, I don't want to say for certain, but I know that our prior superintendent was doing a lot of the updating on the website. Our website looks dated right now.
It is.
I know because of the program that we have, a lot of people signed up, you know, and are getting the apps on their smartphones. So, you know, they'll bring it up and they'll see maybe something that is pertaining to this past year.
Or three years ago.
Well.
We just had a handbook, was it two thousand, I don't know, I went way back to the superintendent that I don't know. And it was, we decided that today that we were going to pull it. It was better to have no handbook than to have it was there.
Right.
So when we.
We have some time to replace it and get it updated on, on the website.
I'm with you, that the parents should be able to go there and find good information that's accurate.
There is a, you know, I'm struggling here, but there's a part of the website is that there's like, there's a, an alert that when you update that part of the website, people who have downloaded the app on their smartphones get the message that has, whatever has been updated on the website.
That's, it's called Thrill Share.
Wow.
It's really, it's really neat how it works.
It's what?
It's really neat how it works. I think the last, if I recall correctly, the last notification was the last newsletter.
Yep.
So I would encourage you to explore and make sure that you're aware of exactly how our website works. So, I would encourage you to explore and make sure that you're aware of exactly how our website works in regards to everything else that is connected to the website, including the app that a lot of people have downloaded.
I guess I'll put it on my phone and write it out, change something and see what happens.
I can't speak for everybody, but when I download an app and the first question that I ask you is, do you want notifications from this app when it's updated? And I always say yes. I think a lot of people do too. So, when you update that, they're going to know immediately. Just so you know.
That must be why I don't always get those updates.
No? I don't remember ever getting that option on YouTube.
It's been an iPhone thing.
Maybe it's an iPhone thing, sorry.
So, every time I make any change in the website?
On a certain part of the website.
You can turn on it.
It's almost like a news feed.
Do you want?
Like a Facebook feed or, you know.
Yeah.
All right, I have that on my to-do list. I haven't spent a lot of time right now on the website or, yeah, I have in terms of looking at things. That's it. And I need to dedicate time to morning and evening to look at email. So, I only selectively pick the email that I know is going to require some action. If a parent sends something to you or the attorney and I'm looking at the others, whoa, right?
If I recall correctly, what's it called, Thrill Share? When you make one post, it'll go out to the, it'll go on the website, it'll go out to, you know, be push-updated, but it can also get pushed to Twitter, Facebook, like basically...
Everything updates.
Every, all the possible...
That's not turned on.
Right, but it has a potential.
It does, it does. Our Facebook page is not connected to it currently. I'm thinking it's separate.
But the concept is, it's kind of a, you know, it's a kind of a broadcast.
Can tell you're technology.
Is there an update on the parking lot?
Yes. The decision was made today. We're going to be going with J D Hayes' strike thing. And it's scheduled for August 4th.
Because I, I mean, I noticed that Ben's not here tonight. I know one of the major, well, actually, Robert's here, but I know one of the major projects for our Highway Department has been completed. So, I think there's some, they have more time on their schedule now than they had before after doing, was it Old Chesterfield Road?
That's finished now. And last I heard, as soon as you guys are ready to contact Dale and set up some time with him and Ben wants to be in on it too with the painting of all your lines.
For changing the lines?
Changing the lines, changing the lanes, making sure that we have the paint available. Though, they said that they will use the paint sprayer as long as we provide the paint. So, it's a special type of paint.
Perhaps they could purchase it and re-rework it down, but it's better.
That's probably the best.
That's probably the best.
And I want to make sure that you also reach out and introduce yourself to our school moderator. You haven't already.
Who's that?
His name is Henry Parkhurst. Who'd you say? Parkhurst.
First.
He's also our state rep. And our treasurer? I want to know the treasurer's name.
She's never met her. I did speak with her today because there's some loose ends that we're trying to decide on certain things.
Yeah.
And I invited her to come in and introduce herself as well.
I just want to make sure I mentioned Mr. Parkhurst.
Thank you very much. Would you want to ask if anyone's interested in that?
This is a part of everyone's packet?
No, it's not.
They just came in today and I'm thinking, Kevin, that it might make sense on the agenda that we have a spot and it says reporter chair. And then, that gives you a chance to do your cleanup and reach back. So, I'll add that.
Sure.
And I was going to take off the agenda, old business, because it just appears that you have something you can come back again and just tell me that it's still, still business of the board.
Yeah. We can get rid of old business as long as, you know, instructions are coming back to the board.
And new business is always good because there is always something that comes up after that packet.
Exactly.
Which you will see.
Yeah, if you're going to have the packets out for the Wednesday or the Thursday before, new business will be worth it.
As well as you might say, you know, one of the boards, there's just a new business. I have a question of such and such. We'll go to either answer or we'll make sure that we get that as well.
Great. Ready for action items?
Yes. Is kind of this a potential partnership? Is that later in the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents.
Second.
Oh, hold on. This is not payroll. This is a accounts payable.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second. That includes our bond payment? Let's do obviously.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there is no payroll? Those are, that was all unknowns, right?
Next week will be a payroll and I may actually include an accounts payable outside of a board meeting just because the three-week timeframe is too long to go not pay.
Are we expecting to get another check in the town?
So, I went down today, so last week they forgot to give us the check. So, I went down today in anticipation of they had a board meeting last night and that the check would be ready and they forgot us again.
I started.
You did. So, Amy said she was going to run it up to me tomorrow and have somebody sign it today. But they forgot us two weeks in a row, so they apologized. We've all been there. Yep. Checks in the mail. Handed to the post office right now. That's when I go pick it up. I'm glad you're not a predator.
Okay, let's get on to these action items. First one is the entry plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the entry plan as presented by Dr. G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of...
Discussion. I just, unless I missed it, I just wanted to know what our, I'm kind of about target dates and how we mark where we are. So, what's your overall plan for how we mark, you know, how this entry plan is working? Is that what we're going to see in January when you prevent your, okay.
You'll have some to report. And if there are things that come along the way that will benefit the board or the district that surface, it's going to be in the plan, but it's timely to share, then I would be sharing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the entry plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve our Subcommittee Plan as Presented?
And that's the Legislative Action Policy Subcommittee, correct?
Yes. To approve the change to the J R A fourteen days.
Right, to fourteen days. I will make a motion to approve the change in policy J R A, Student Records and Access. This procedure must be completed within fourteen days to adhere to the RSA.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the changes to policy J R A, say aye. Aye. We've already done the manifests. Sorry, I went out. And we have the MOU for Access. That's going to be a motion for...
Signature?
For signatures. Do you have the original or...
No, anyone, because I don't have their signature.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve and have our school chair, school board chair and superintendent sign the 2017-18 MOU with access.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I got a question, if I may. I was just wondering, previous discussion was talking about the liability with the vehicles on the ground. I didn't see anything in there about that, as well as food preparation. Overall, it's a wonderful contract, I would say.
We didn't address that. Vehicles on the ground, we mean they have...
They park their buses here.
And typically, you wouldn't put everything into a contract that says you're not going to do this and you're not going to do this, but it was just previously discussed.
Well, I'm certainly available to, I still recommend you improve the contract and we get one next year unless that has been a problem.
The food preparation.
Talk to me about that.
They're no longer here.
They're having...
They're no longer in the room where that was issued, correct?
It doesn't necessarily keep them from...
They may be in that room.
But if there's been clear communication set, I mean, they could...
Certainly something the principal could address. Yeah.
As far as the vehicle, whatever.
And that was definitely part of the discussion when the initial draft of the MOU happened at the end of the school year, that food prep couldn't happen.
I would think as long as there's been clear communication back and forth and then that's been clearly established.
That's certainly...
There's something that is an addendum to the contract if it remains an ongoing problem or issue, yes, or addendum to the MOU.
So, is it a food problem?
Not allowed.
No food.
No food prep.
Can't do that. And parking has been, parking was more of an issue during the wintertime. Are we talking about certain vehicles or the buses or is that what you're referencing?
The issues really did lay in the wintertime of moving vehicles, but that was addressed early on. The second reason for the, is the liability concern with vehicles on the grounds.
Now, I was just, that was just reviewing the insurance because there is part of that in the MOU.
But we're responsible if we allow vehicles to be parked on the grounds if there's damage that occurs and they're in a parking space.
Please, back up. The school is responsible, it doesn't matter whose vehicle it is, the school is responsible.
For parked vehicles on grounds. We've had a claim issued.
So, if a parent comes in, parks, goes to P Q O, and somebody hits their car, we're responsible?
It's damage that was done in the parking space by...
I would like to have a conversation with the parents about that a little bit and get them more certification.
So, it's probably the gulf or something because it's a school area, what's the...
If we're negative, it's negligible on that, yeah.
But what happened there though is if there was two parents involved or if there was two parties involved, our insurance would come first and we would segregate against the other party's insurance. But we would become first on the risk.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And it's not necessarily where one car hits another car. It's like the car's parked and something fell on it. The plow hit it, the plow hit it. It was vandalized at night because it was parked on your property. That's where we're responsible.
That makes some interesting point. I see several vehicles here on the way.
Seven.
At least one.
I feel comfortable adding addendums to the contract.
Do you think that's appropriate?
I do, I do. You know, there may be some bigger issues as well to attach to this than when I have a conversation with my mates to get more layers at the end, even if they're there. Can I always do an addendum?
Their offices have moved offsite. They've made no mention of taking their buses with them?
I was in part of the discussion. I was just reading this tonight.
Yep.
The last discussion that I was asking, we were talking about this, was that they were to talk to their insurance company about how indemnification would work if their vehicles were on our property.
Perfect.
And if they, if we couldn't be assured that we would be held harmless, then they would need to move them. That was the way that the discussion went. I don't know what the outcome of their conversation was with their...
Was the conversation about them having us named on their policy as additionally insured?
Anything that's in here? I don't know.
That should be in there. I just didn't know. Something's transferred in, some didn't. But I'll follow up.
Okay.
I still stand by my motion to have it signed.
Is there a second?
I think there was a second.
I did.
You did.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion to sign the MOU with Access, say aye.
Aye.
And if you just want to let me know what's up? The real, you know, the copy that they're wanting to see as well. I'll sign it too.
You can get the two pages and you can sign that and I'll send it on and we'll have them come in and sign their, sign their cards.
Okay. Motion for the approval of the auditors?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the auditors. It's a three-year contract, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
So, a motion for our superintendent to sign it. Yes.
Second. To include the superintendent's signature. Still second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 So, I have to citizens comment?
I will put on a new business.
Other new business.
Is that not still after citizens comment?
Yeah, it is. All right. I apologize, I'm stumbling around the subject right now. Citizens comments. Yes, Sue.
Did I, I think I saw a new school calendar made out, with some changes to it, no?
It shouldn't have any changes. It should be the exact same school calendar that was approved.
And that's on the website already?
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't make any changes to this, to this school.
I thought I heard the word approved.
That was the...
That's the meeting calendar, the school board meeting calendar.
Anything else?
Can I change my line? When you're talking about lining, I could also consider the no parking space up around in front of the elementary schools. I know I mentioned it before, I don't know if you discussed it or not, but that's also another part of the school and the fire department may enter from the front and we need to make sure they have room to park up there also.
So, what you're saying is bringing no parking all the way around to the other school because, or to both ends of the school because of course what happens is people don't park here and then they just pull around and they park in front of the elementary school.
To you.
I think it should be discussed before lining gets done.
Is that the, I'm sorry, Sue, you're talking about the one...
In front of the elementary school.
In front of the handicap spot that's there?
Yes, bringing no parking all the way in front of the mall. What she is saying is that no parking should be in front of the entire front of the school, both this side and the elementary school.
Right.
So, eliminating that handicap.
So, eliminating that handicap parking spot, basically, yeah.
Or...
Do we have enough meeting? I think we need to keep that handicap. I think we need to keep that handicap spot there.
But just something for you guys, whoever's talking about how to do it, it's something to consider, because if I remember right, there's two separate fire panels, one over there and one over here.
Yep.
So if they need to go over there, they need to have space to go over there, just like they need to have space to come in here.
Right. I think they have enough space though, that they could park in front of that handicap spot.
Not if, but if kids, not if parents are there picking up kids.
No, they park, like, in the mornings, there's a guy that parks right in front of the sidewalk, you know, snowy mornings, then you have to, like, come over a snowbank and go up the sidewalk, because they park right in front of it every morning.
Do you...
So don't pass that feedback on to Mike.
Yeah. It's part of their conversation.
So I think the fire trucks need to be able to get to the higher hydrants, the panel does speak to the other panel.
The panel's thought of each other?
They can access this panel and take care of the other panel.
Okay. Let's make sure that Mike is up on exactly what needs to be done out there when it comes to the striping toward the parking lot.
And who's he getting that clear with?
Fire chief.
Yeah, the fire chief, yeah.
Highway department?
Well, they'll be talking to the highway department, they're going to be doing the spraying. I guess we can make mistakes now since we don't have it on the spray. Try not to.
Alicia, has that been mapped out?
Not that I'm aware.
Right, because in perfectly, I see the diagram, I see all the apps and the lines and everybody's agreement that that's what's...
I would suggest that you include Ben in this conversation as well.
Do we want to make this a function of the, well, it's a function of the facilities? Is it not already a function of one of the committees or administrative?
I thought this was a function of someone else.
Yeah.
Yep. I think it's a function of the facilities.
It is, because it came up on that report, we're already...
And that committee is, or is...
I'm looking right now.
Joint loss facilities.
The energy conservation of facilities is Ben and Steve.
So, Ben and Steve.
Should be a part of that conversation about that restriping.
We'd be quiet over there for a reason.
How that makes sense.
Do you have a Microsoft Paint?
And you said, I heard you say that that was happening August tenth, was it?
August fourth is when the seal coding is going to occur.
And who's reviewing that?
Well, we're just recoding everything.
They're recoding to the yellow line and blocking out the two yellow crosswalks.
So let me ask a silly question. How does it get reported out, like, okay, we're doing this right now, no one can park here, everyone's going to park behind the building or in the street or on the roof or someplace else? How does that get communicated, is there a sign that goes up, is there a gold email that goes up? Is there a day off for everybody?
Well, it's going to be August fourth, so...
So how does that message get out, August fourth?
So typically the person who's running the project would communicate out to the people who would need to know.
And who's writing the project?
Ryan Decker. I believe as far as facilities go, that goes to Michael Dupree?
Yes.
Yes. So if I could just send an email out to whoever needs to know or make sure that the...
Because again, that's, it's going to happen on a Friday.
Right, and it will happen on the Friday when we're off at summer, which is why we scouted it that way.
Right, so Michael will be here.
Yep.
To coordinate this.
But the school will be quiet as well, I mean, there won't be any...
There's no summer school on Friday.
Steve, could you get that to me and then we can coordinate with Ben and then... If there are people that need to be included in this, and Ben would be a key player in this.
He retired a foul.
Yep.
I'd like him to be a relatively strong leader in this whole coordination.
Yep.
So I would call, what's you and I talk?
Barry needs to, Barry.
Yeah.
He's been very busy lately. Okay. You said you had...
I just have one question about the newsletter, about the weekly newsletter. The superintendent had been doing it, I think that was just a, because at one point he had also been a principal and the principal was doing the weekly newsletter, but towards the end of Jim's tenure, he stopped doing the newsletter. Wasn't necessarily the biggest fan of two pages, but I think that the weekly newsletter is really vital. It always served as a nice opportunity for community and a quick update as a parent, even as I, as involved as I am. So I'm not sure if there's been discussion as to who might do that, who might do a newsletter, I don't necessarily even think it has to be the same person every week if somebody new wants to take it on, but just as a, throwing it out there. And as far as I remember, it's been a pretty consistent thing for a number of years.
Yeah, I went on and read them and it was like March and they stopped.
Yeah.
But they weren't valuable, most of them, they were just one page or a short little snippet.
It could be trivial.
Tricky.
Yeah, you know, and I saw that, I think that's a great idea, I was trying to figure out, most of the connect is with the school and things are happening at the school, so I did have a brief conversation with Mike about, you know, how would, how would that be organized that I could get information and, you know, put it in there, because I could, should contribute, and I don't mind doing it, but I said to him, we should both sign it. His name and mine should be there, because it should be a joint partnership with the information we're getting out, so it's only been a soft conversation right now.
Perfect.
I think that as school gets close, that's when it gets active, we'll be looking for the bus routes in the paper, you know, and start getting that out to, so parents can see that as a good informational tool to start using.
Okay.
Just to point out that it's all good material for the website too, for all the, you know, for the blur students and the broadcast stuff. You know, any type of information you have, you know, that's big.
You mean when I put that out, it goes on the app, that newsletter?
You could add to this.
You could send out anything you want that way, so, I mean, so basically every parent that has the app installed, every, I mean, you have a way of getting even information to a lot of people.
It is, it's a valuable way, it's valuable.
In this day and age, it is a valuable tool.
Yeah, okay. It's be fun to have a kid to, down the road, have a kid newsletter, but we have some kids that...
That's what I was kind of thinking when I was saying, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be the same voice every week, maybe if you have some kind of template, include...
Well, I was thinking Kids for Kids.
Yeah.
Okay, can we move into non-public, are we ready?
There's one other thing that's under, that came up, this is a, you know, a new business.
Okay.
And that is, Alicia and I had an opportunity to meet with some folks from Richmond. And they, they had been appointed by the Richmond Board of Selectmen as an ad hoc committee on education to, and those members were Jed Butterfield, Peter Mohall and Doug Burson. We met with Jed and with Peter. So basically what their charge was, was to see if they had any other, what their options may be if they were to withdraw from SA 38. The ad hoc committee is just beginning the process now, it's an exploratory, to explore options of where Richmond students could be educated. Winchester is one of their options, the town would like to explore in this, I'll call it a fact-finding initiative at this point. From a personal perspective, I indicated at the meeting that this is something that I would certainly entertain for for us to consider, for them to consider, and who said that I think the board would like to hear about this, and then they were really eager to, let's see, let's see what information we could get. And so I said I would bring it to the board, if you, you take the temperature, and if it was, yeah, this is something you'd be interested in exploring, then I would relay that back to them, and since I got from them is they would like to then come to whatever meeting you would like to have a discussion about that. So I guess, you know, just put the balls at your court, what do you think about that, Ian?
We're talking about Richmond students tuitioning to Winchester.
Correct.
Well, I think that's...
That could be one option.
Yeah.
Another option might be, it could be joining Winchester, it could be, you know, I don't know how, what level...
What's their population?
They had ninety-seven, for the students, they had ninety-seven students, yeah, and kindergarten through eight.
Correct. Because their high...
And they had eight, yeah, and so that's what they were looking for, then they had to look to where would they send their high school students.
All right, so they were just concerned K through eight.
Correct.
They would handle their own, because if they're withdrawing from SA 38, they're also considering withdrawing their high school students as well.
Well, not necessarily, they may, they may just keep their high school kids, they may explore, I'll just say, a surrounding community where there's a high school.
Yeah.
So I think they're really kind of exploring their options, but I was very pleased to hear that we are on their radar screen, that there may be more in common than not in common, and it might make sense.
Yep.
And you were also, you know, kind of exploring are there any other revenue potentials? I like the idea, you mentioned from the revenue side, but, you know, you have, you know, diversity, the more kids you have, you have more interactions, you have clubs, you might have enough for sports, the related arts, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a great opportunity for more kids to interact and learn from each other.
Well, and they're, they're traveling quite a distance to get to, because thirty-eight is Swansea, right? So they're traveling over to Cutler or Caesar for elementary, and that's, that's...
I think they go to Richmond, I mean, to Emerson, don't they go there?
In Detroit?
Yeah, I think, I think there's, I think some go, I don't remember, I know some go to Cutler.
But Banana's taking a look at the condition of their buildings and those particular schools could be closed.
So they could be looking at buses even further, yeah, and we know that expense.
And they have the advantage of, where they don't have, they don't have many capital costs right now.
Right.
And so, you know, if one recommendation could be, and I think they said from NESTC, then, you know, they could build their own school, or Banana should, you know, build another campus and close schools. And I think they're thinking of, do they really want to get involved in paying their share of a capital expenditure over time? Those schools that are in it, that have, that benefited from that, when they want to withdraw, they get the surprise that they have to pay back the capital expense.
Right.
So they don't have that right now, and I think that's part of the motivation to look at the long run. I applaud them for doing that and seeing, is there a good place where their children can get educated that we can create a win-win?
So you were talking about eighty stu, how many students?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven K through eight right now?
Yeah, there were eighteen students in seventh and eighth grade, and then the remaining were, and they were kind of spread out fairly evenly in the grades.
So that'd be, you know, about twelve additions, ten to twelve additional per grade.
Depending upon our population, it could be an addition of, it would be an addition of staff and potentially even one or so per, per grade level.
I don't think it really...
Well, if you add twelve students, depending upon where we are in our population, it could, I mean, we are kind of dedicated to keeping our population in our own class sizes within, you know, twenty or less, that's been, that's been a dedication of this school for a few years, so you know, adding twelve children, depending on where, again, where they fall.
It's going to depend on where they fall.
Mike was at that meeting, so he could take, will you get to that?
No.
Mike was at that...
But I have him after, sure.
Okay. Mike was at that meeting, so he, we asked the breakdown, how many in first, ten in second, and so, and he was writing and looking at how that would compare. So this was, you know, a very soft exploratory meeting, but it sets the stage for, I guess I would be asking for, I guess, a motion or something from the board to say you'd be interested in participating in that.
I don't think it's a motion, but...
I would like to make that motion, or suggestion, however you want it worded, that we invite Mr. Butterfield and...
I would, I would, I would reduce down to be a part of one of our upcoming meetings.
Okay, okay.
And you'll let me know, do you want to have this on the agenda and talk about it more, or are you ready to have them come and listen to what they have to say?
I'm, I'm ready to come and listen, I'm ready for them to come and listen.
I'm ready to hear what they have to say.
If we hear what they have to say, I don't think we have much...
Because they'll be here at your August meeting.
Yeah.
Can we take a look at our August meetings right now? I don't know what we talked about, we have, looks like we have one scheduled for the seventeenth and then again on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the way it's falling now is not good.
I will not be here on the twenty-fourth.
Why are we doing that, why not the thirteenth?
The seventeenth.
Because they're going to be at...
Summit, yeah. Is there...
The ten, the twenty-fourth? Do the second and the fourth instead of the first and the third?
Do we need, do we need to have two meetings in August?
I was going to ask that.
Yes.
I don't think so.
I think so. Well, I just think getting ready for school, school starts at the end of that month. Are you prepared, are we prepared?
I would, I would like our administration to be concentrating on getting school ready, and whether they get it ready for, we have two meetings.
I asked that question today, and Mike was there, and did we say that we could probably...
We are comfortable with one meeting in August, okay.
I think if issues come up that need short attention, I think that would change.
So what day did you...
I'm going to propose the seventeenth.
Well, that's the nice, middle, so that way if there's something before or after, yeah, I can do the seventeenth.
It'll be the second one since I joined, that we had one meeting at one. It's generally how it's been in the summertime.
Yes.
Someday.
Yep.
I like where that sentence is going.
You're better than I am. All right?
And we'll, we'll hear, we'll meet with, Richmond will be on our agenda on the seventeenth.
If they're not, if they can't make it on the seventeenth, then, you know, the seventh and September.
I think they would have come, seriously, but it'd be some time, so it's not bad. Yeah, that's going to be...
Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public.
Our motion to enter into non-public under RSA ninety-one, A, three, and B.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes.